Today is Tuesday, November 7, 2023. It is a New Ulm City Council meeting. Andrew is on vacation, so I'm going to work us through the meeting tonight. But we can start off by item number one, consent agenda items. Counselors?
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any questions on anything? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, 2.1, rideshare services license to Randy Murphy.
I'll approve the issuance of a rideshare services license to Randy Murphy, 1307 South German Street, New Ulm, Minnesota, for the period beginning November 8, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 2.2, raffles gambling permit to the 3M Club in the United States.
I'll offer a motion to approve the issuance of lawful gambling permit for 3M of the United States Incorporated 3M Club, New Ulm, chapter of the United States, to conduct raffles gambling at New Ulm Turner Hall, 102 South State Street, on Saturday, January 6, 2024.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 3.1, New Ulm Active Transportation Plan Adoption. Mr. Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and City Council members. The Hurd in New Ulm, in conjunction with the City of New Ulm, applied for an Active Transportation Planning Assistance Grant in June of 2022. We were notified in July of '22 that we were awarded this grant. So this grant funded the use of a consultant engineer under contract with MINDOT, and that consultant team consisted of members from HDR Incorporated and Terra Soma LLC. City staff, along with members of the Hurd in New Ulm Coalition for Active Safe and Healthy Streets, began working with MINDOT consultants in September of 2022. We worked through many planning sessions, workshops, to develop the plan and included a walking audit and citywide tour of our transportation network. This Active Transportation Plan serves as a living guide that establishes priorities to guide future investments in making the walking and biking safer, more accessible, along with identifying priority routes within the city that are most in need of improvements. This plan will work in conjunction with the updated comprehensive plan that is being developed, the city's complete streets policy, and ADA transition plan. The plan includes sections exploring our network as it is today, building our network, and identifying future network goals, multiple design references and suggestions on how the community can engage active movements. Having this adopted plan with setting future goals for our net transportation network will benefit the city when applying for future grant opportunities. It shows the community is supportive of active transportation and is taking steps to make the city safer for those walking, biking, and rolling. So that is the quick summary of the plan. It is included within your packet for review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Joe, it's certainly a well-done report. Where is this going to be posted at? So if people want to take a look at it?
So we will put it on the city's website. Under the engineering page, we have multiple design manuals and things of that nature, like the ADA Transition Plan and Complete Streets Policy. It'll be included with all of those guidance documents on the city website.
And we got a grant that paid for?
Yep, that grant paid for 100% of the consultant time. I believe about $25,000.
Okay, yeah, it's a really well-done report, so I'd encourage people to take a look at it. Comments from anybody else?
Again, it was very good, very well represented. I liked the easy reading, how it was explained.
Yeah, it was really easy reading.
My question is, how long is this good for? Is it, we revisit it every three to five years?
That's a good question, because there will be items, you know, as we make the improvements, that it will become outdated, but I think it's relatively easy for us to update. So yeah, probably maybe with the comp plan, as the comp plan's updated, we can update the Active Transportation Plan as well. So haven't really thought of that prior, but probably on that same cycle as a comp plan would make sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I commend those that put this together, made it, like I said, so easy to read, easy to see. So I'll make a motion to adopt the City of New Ulm Active Transportation Plan.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other comments? Mayor?
No comments. I too, I was looking for a picture of me.
It wasn't on the front page?
No, I just had the opportunity to help with the safe walking to school program.
Yeah, I did see that, okay. Great. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 3.2, the preliminary plat of Alliance Bank, first edition. Mr. Snowbrook.
Acting Chair, members of the City Council. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions at their October 26, 2023 meeting. So this is the preliminary plat that we're considering today. The applicant is Bob Reuter, on behalf of Alliance Bank. This is a half-block of property. So the legal description, current legal description is lots 8 through 14, block 62 north of Center Street. There are two structures on the property, and I'm going to refer to them as the old and the new. And so the old building has an address of 340 North Minnesota Street, and the new has an, or excuse me, 336, and the new has an address of 322. Property is generally located east of North Minnesota Street and is located between 3rd and 4th North Street. Property currently consists of seven lots, and it further has been divided into five parcels for assessing purposes. Plat will divide the property into two lots. And you can see on the screen, the red line is the location of the property line that would separate the two parcels. The Lot 1, which is the old building, will have .55 acres. Lot 2, which is the new building, will have .79 acres. The retaining wall on the property is, separates the two lots. There are no lot standards for properties in the B4 zoning district, so there's no minimum lot width, or lot depth, or lot area. Planning Commission identified certain conditions. One of them is that they pay the plating fee at $260. Second is that they provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2016, or newer format. And the third is that they provide and record an access easement, allowing the owner of Lot 2 to utilize the portion of Lot 1 to perform necessary maintenance, repair, and construction activities associated with the retaining wall adjoining the property line between the two lots. That would conclude the report from the Planning Commission.
Okay, questions from the council? No, then I'd entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll offer a motion to approve, with conditions, a preliminary plat of Alliance Bank, first addition, located at 322 and 336 North Minnesota Street.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 3.3, First South Street Parking Restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, counselors. Safety Commission considered this request at their November 2 meeting. Staff received a request from residents at City Center Apartments, 115 South Minnesota Street, to look at the need for parking restrictions at the alley exit on First South Street between Minnesota and German Streets. Currently, there are angled parking stalls on both sides of the alley exit that create sightline issues for vehicles exiting, especially if it's a car with a lower profile. So as mentioned, the Safety Commission considered this on November 2. They recommended the removal of three angled parking stalls adjacent to the alley exit, as can be seen in the depicted attachments, with the stalls being Xed out on that attachment. I went there and looked firsthand, and you can see from the other photos included within the packet, that especially as you look up the hill to the west, and if there's a larger truck or vehicle parked in one of those stalls, it is very hard to see oncoming traffic. So the residents have expressed that there have been some near misses with them exiting, and are thus requesting the parking stalls be eliminated.
So who's reporting the near misses?
Residents from City Center.
From the City Center Apartments?
Yep.
I just worry about, because we keep pulling parking spots from the downtown, and this is, again, three more spots that we're going to lose. Would it have to be all three spots? Could it be one on each side versus two on the one and one on the other?
Could get, you could probably could get by with the, with the two stalls, or just doing the two stalls looking to the west. I think looking west is more of a concern than looking to the east.
Going down, yeah, which is to the right.
I personally drove that, and even in a pickup, when there's an SUV or something, it is hard to see anything going up. So I'd suggest two on that one side, the west side, versus one on each side. That's less of a concern, bud.
You got to refresh my memory. City Engineer, why did we make that one-way again?
So the alley was originally, it was a one-way. And then when City Center was constructed shortly thereafter, it was requested that there's, so there is two-way traffic on the north.
North side.
Just for ease of access for the residents to get in and out. And the alley is wider on the north half than it is on the south half. The south half is a normal 14-foot width. North half is wide enough for two vehicles to approach head-to-head.
Was there talk in the committee about who uses those three spots the most? Because there's a little bit of residential, there's a little bit of business.
The Commission did discuss losing stalls a little bit. You know, there is that, I don't know if, was the wine cellar, if it's still in business, that was in, kind of in that basement half of Route, Route 1 building. The Commission did have concerns with that, but ultimately, they forwarded to recommend eliminating those stalls due to the safety nature that exists.
I believe there's a vacation rental home above the wine cellar in that area, but less for retail. I mean, there's really not a lot.
Right, you got Route 1, you got...
There's still Minnesota parking, too.
I just keep worrying, we keep pulling them one by one, we keep taking them away, and I get nervous about that.
I have to say, it is, in my opinion, a real safety issue. I used to live at City Center Apartments, and it was very difficult. I drive a, you know, a higher sitting car, but I still had issues looking to the west.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just to the west, but not, not really discuss something about to the east, you know, you know, in those aspects. But it's something, maybe we try two stalls and then see, report back, you know, if they really see the need for, to the east side yet, or, you know, to try to retain.
Was the request for the three stalls to the west?
It was two to the west.
Two to the west, one to the east?
One to the east.
Yep, so looking, you know, as you look east, at least for that, looking east, you have that westbound traffic, you can at least creep out and see around the vehicles. Up the hill to the west, creeping out, there's just no room. Once you're, you creep out, and then by the time you can see, you're in the driving lane. So it's, we could certainly try just the two stalls to the west to start, and then see how that goes, and have residents report back if they have more concerns.
Yeah, I mean, that gives us an option to review the still retained parking.
Kind of timeline do you want for that, six months, or?
Well, depending when weather turns, it might be hard to get the stalls to be removed. So we're, Street Department staff is ready to do this work tomorrow. Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a resolution on this.
I understand what Counselor Schultz is saying with the parking stalls, but I'm going to go by, you know, it's come to our attention, the Safety Commission recommended. I'd rather just see us do what Safety Commission recommended, remove the, remove the three.
I'd support that, Dave.
I'd support.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
No.
I'm going to offer the resolution approving the removal of three parking stalls along First South Street adjacent to the alley approach in block 64, south of Center.
Second.
So resolution, a second. Any other comments? Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Yep. Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz, or Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. All right, moving on to item number 4.1, the 2023 RRFB Project Contract Award. Joe, are you taking that one?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and City Counselors. Staff received two bids for this project. We opened bids on October 11, and after that bid opening, we had to go through the grant's approval process with MINDOT for this project. So that's why we didn't bring this immediately after the bid opening. So as I was stating, we received two bids for this project. The low bid is $171,336.53. The second bid was $172,243, so $900 difference between the two bids. Low bidder is MR Paving and Excavating, and their bid was 11% under the engineer's estimate. We executed the MINDOT grant for this work, and the grant will cover 100% of this estimated total project cost.
We like those projects.
Yes. And again, just for your recollection, this is, we'll be installing six sets of RFBs at Center and Highland, Center and Garden, 10th South and Payne, North Highland Avenue, and North Broadway, North Highland Avenue and Cassau 29, and finally, 5th North and Washington Streets. And many of those legs are on county roadway segments, and the county is in support of this project as well.
Counselors?
Any bid that comes under estimates, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to award the contract for the 2023 RRFB project to M&amp;R Paving and Excavating in the amount of $171,336.53.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4.2, the second ordinance consideration on zoning. This has to do with our chickens and goats, and we don't have, what's his name, Johnny here tonight, huh?
Elwood's here for questions. And then I just want to add that, as part of the motion, we need to make sure that you approve the summary of the ordinance that we, that will be publicized.
And I know with the chickens specifically, that had to do with basically eliminating the need to get permission from your neighbors to have chickens. So that's the basic change on that one. And the other one is obviously allowing goats with a bunch of different rules, so, okay?
So we need to read the summary into the report, too?
Well, I think just add on to the end of the motion and approve the summary of the ordinance for publication.
Okay. I'll make a motion to conduct the second consideration of ordinance number 2023-075, amending section 8.29 of the New Ulm City Code regulating the keeping of chickens and allowance of goats for prescribed grazing purposes. In summary of ordinance number 2023-075, that amends Chapter 8, Public Protection of New Ulm City Code by amending regulations for keeping chickens and allowing goats within city limits for the controlled management of invasive species and weeds, and establishing a permit procedure and settling conditions for prescribed grazing for goats under the permit.
Second. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4.3, second consideration of ordinance number 23076, Stormwater Management and Standards. Joe?
Mr. Vice President, City Counselors, there's been no changes since the first consideration.
With that, I'm going to offer a motion.
Same thing, make sure that you authorize the publication of a summary. You don't necessarily have to read the summary, but authorize the publication of it.
So I'm going to offer a motion to conduct a second considerization of, adopt the ordinance number 23-076, amending Chapter 13, Stormwater Management and Standards of the City Code of the City of New Ulm for the inclusion of stormwater utility fee, and then include our summary.
Approve the summary for publication.
Approve the summary for publication.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any comments? Anybody? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 4.3, yeah, 4.3.
5.1.
1, sorry, we're moving on to new business. Convention and Visitors Bureau Financial Quarter is ending June 30, 2023, and September 30, 2023.
My comments to our Sarah Wormka excellently presented. We're doing better than we had in the last couple of years with our COVID issues, so I'm going to receive and order to file the report from Sarah Wormka, President and CEO, New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce, regarding the Convention and Visitors Bureau Financial Reports for the quarter ending June 30, 2023, and September 30, 2023.
Second.
Second. Any comments from anybody? The chamber's just kicking it the last year. Good job, Sarah. All right, not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 5.2, first consideration of ordinance number 23, Chapter 5, Liquor License and Regulation.
Counselors, this was requested by one of our downtown businesses. All it does is it changes the liquor sale times. It allows them to start selling at 8:00 a.m. on Sundays instead of 10:00 a.m.
And it was one business that wanted, asked for this. Any opposition?
No, it's just matching state law.
So they don't have to open at 8:00, they can just choose to open at 8:00? Okay, I want to make sure that was clear.
Make a motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number 2023-XX, amending Chapter 5, Section 5.33 of the City Code of New, of the City of New Ulm, relative to liquor licensing and regulation of the New Ulm City Code to amend Sunday hours for liquor sales to begin selling alcohol at 8:00 a.m. on Sundays instead of 10:00 a.m.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. So any comments, complaints, nothing? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 5.3, first consideration, schedule of fees for 2024.
Counselors, this is the annual update of the fee schedule for the next year. There weren't a lot of changes, but I will just kind of summarize the ones that are there. Over the last couple, or over the last year, we've made some changes that will now appear on the fee schedule. Those include the temporary liquor license that was added for downtown events, that was added in March. And then we also removed the requirement for a license for arcade and other amusement devices, as well as the public sauna, and then that was changed in June. And then in June, we also added the transportation network license, so that's allowing the Uber and Lyft drivers and other ones in town. We had some discussion earlier about the snow and weeds, so that will be changed to read that each offense for snow or weeds will be $150 plus the contract cost. And then we are adding 5% if it's assessed, to cover those extra charges that we incur by going through that process. We have, are proposing adding a noise variance fee. There isn't one now, but when people request noise variances, we have several publications we have to do, and letters and notices we have to mail. That costs quite a bit that way, and then even with the city time, doing those maps and everything that are required, so we're proposing a $150 fee there. We have added the miscellaneous debris removal, which is the contract cost plus a 10% admin fee. And then the cemetery approved, or monuments and cemeteries approved, increasing most of their fees by $25. So that's, that's fairly normal for them to keep up with inflation and help to fund that future columbarium or other cemetery improvement costs. And then the one change for the police department was they increased the cost of the breathalyzer test. They increased it from $10 to 20. Those are all of the changes that are on the fee schedule as proposed here.
I saw some of the fees went up, what, a small 2% or something, or like?
For Park and Rec. They, so the commission approved all those. I honestly didn't look at those real closely.
But we're still approving them tonight.
Yes.
The one thing that I noticed out of all the fees was a big change from renting the shelters. Now, what I saw, it looks like they did is went from, you could rent it for four hours, four-hour blocks, and they changed it to one-hour blocks. At least, that's how I read it. Am I reading that wrong? Which I kind of, at first I was like, ooh, I don't know about that. And then the more I thought about it, I'm like, yeah, then it might, some people don't want it for four hours. Why only want it for two?
That request is coming because Park and Rec receives that about, what, we have to rent it? Can't we just rent it an hour?
Yeah, or maybe just two hours.
I think there's more demand for that than the half and full day.
That was the big change to me in looking over all the fees, so I kind of liked it. I think it'll work out well for people. Because otherwise, you're right, don't want to rent it for four hours when it's just a potluck thing for lunch, or something, so. Other comments from anybody?
Things seem pretty fair.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I'll make a motion to conduct the first consideration of ordinance number 2023-, to be determined, amending section 2.99 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm, relative to the schedule of city fees.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. My only other comment, and I know Joey's not here, I would ask him, is all of our other fees that we looked at in our, in our packet, list last year's and this year's, but the Park and Rec never does that. They just give us 2024 fees. So I really would appreciate if they would, next year, add 23, 24, and 25 fees.
I think they struggle with how to present that, because their fee schedule is already a lot of numbers, just with the resident, non-resident.
Or maybe include 24, or 23 and 24, so that we can, otherwise, I just, I mean, I had to flip around on the computer to go back to 23, so I could compare, so, okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other, anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 5.4, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage.
And I believe we do this annually, correct?
Every year.
I'm going to offer the resolution authorizing to not waive the monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by Minnesota Statutes 466.04, accepting liability coverage limits of $1,500,000 from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, effective January 1, 2024, and authorize the city manager to execute the waiver for and, for and on behalf of the City of New Ulm.
So we have a motion, our resolution? So we have a motion, a resolution and a second, any other comments on this? Hearing none, Nicole, will you please call roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item 5.5, New Ulm Battery Cannon Shoot Veterans Day. Mr. Dalton, anything on that?
This is just a request that asks to come before Council and to...
Fire the cannons out at Shells, did it last year? Going to continue it again this year.
I think it's a great idea, and you know, everybody's okay with it, so. Authorizes New Ulm Battery to shoot cannons in observation of Veterans Day at Shells Brewery, 1860 Shell Road on Saturday, November 11th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion to second, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 5.6, Purchase Agreement for the Sale of Property at 2206 Jacob Street. Mr. Snowbrick's heading to the podium to enlighten us.
Yes, so this request involves authorization to sign a purchase agreement to sell 2.26 acres of property that's legally described as Lot 2, Block 2, Airport Industrial Park Third Edition, and the sale would be to Patrick Dejanasek and Kimberly A. Janasek Family Trust. Street address of this property is 202206 Jacob Street, and in your agenda packet, there was a drawing showing the location of this property. It is generally in the vicinity of Walmart. Now, the city purchased this property back in 2017, it was a total of approximately 44 acres, and that purchase was made from the Schultz family. City followed that up with a plat of the property in February of 2021, and at that time, we divided the property into four lots, and we extended Somson Street and Jacob Street to their intersection. And I might note that we completed improvements, street improvements, within the past month, so it's fully paved and curb and gutter, and sidewalks are installed. At a work session held June 20th, 2023, the City Council discussed appropriate sale prices and assessment terms for these lots. It was generally agreed at that time for Lot 2, that a sale price of $1 and a 50% assessment payment for Lot 2 would be appropriate. The fair market land value for the property was estimated at $49,720. That assessment was made looking at past sales in that particular area of the community, worked with our city attorney's office in coming up with that number. Then we also reduced the assessment amount by 50%, which is what was discussed. So the total amount of business subsidy that is being provided is $133,637. And those terms are found in the purchase agreement. The assessment term is 10 years, the interest rate is 4 1/4%. The Janasek Family Trust would construct a 7,200 square foot warehouse for the storage and distribution of dry goods. The trust would lease the facility to a different company. That company is currently located in New Ulm, but is in need of a new facility. The company would retain three existing jobs and would add two new positions. The required hourly payment rate for those new positions would be $15.88 per hour, and that's based upon the required rate that we have in our business subsidy policy. The jobs are to be created within two years of the date of the certificate of occupancy for the project, and the trust is required to provide job information for a five-year term. That would conclude the staff report, I might know that the proposed owner is also in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Hearing none, I offer I'd entertain a resolution.
Well, I'll offer the resolution, authorize the mayor and city manager to sign purchase agreement to sell 2.26 acres of property legally described as Lot 2, Block 2, Airport Industrial Park Third Edition to Patrick Jankey and Kimberly A. Jankey Family Trust, street address 2206 Jacob Street.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any other comments? Resolution, so Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to 5.7, City Charter Commission to convene to me, this is Mr. Scott, is he alive tonight? Are you on, up in the clouds there, Mr. Scott?
I am here.
Hey, I forgot to welcome you, so welcome.
Thank you.
So we're, this is our annual meeting, I had a question for you, now we need to find out if everybody that's on the Charter Commission still wants to be on the commission, correct? Or do we just send notices out and hope everybody shows up?
Well, I think they were notified of that when they sworn in the position by the judicial system, that here's your expiration date, I mean...
Yeah, and I don't think we have any up for expiration this year, so, I think Lisa, if you offer to convene, Lisa, we'll send out a doodle poll to the members to pick a date before the end of the year.
I do know there's an error on here, on the list of Charter Commission folks, it has me as the chair, and that's Dwayne Hansel was the last sworn-in chair.
Okay, we can fix that.
So I was the chair of the year prior to that, so, and I think Rick Jensen was the vice, yeah, Rick was the vice chair, so...
Resolution to authorize the City Charter Commission to convene in 2023 to continue the process of reviewing the revised, revising the Home Rule Charter.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to second, offer the resolution, any other comments? Hearing none, Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on, we have donations, let's talk donations, 5.8, library donations and memorials first.
I'll offer the resolution to accept donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period of July 1st to September 30th, 2023. Would you like me to read the donations in?
Yes.
Okay. Chad Lewis donated $14.95 for a book. Anonymous donated $40 in cash. Helen Wang, $100 cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $300 cash for undesignated. New Ulm Public Library staff, Mary Paulson donated $122 for children's books. Gary Sassenberg, $27 for a book. Anita and Al Longton, $20 cash for children's books, for Jack Brush.
Great.
Second.
And we got a second, motion to second, any other comments? Thank you, everybody, for your donations. Hearing that, Nicole, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to 5.9, Police Department donations.
I'll offer the resolution to accept a monetary donation of $1,500 from Herb Knutzen of the Arctic Plunge to support the New Ulm Police Department K-9 program.
Second.
Second, that's really a great event, that's what, three years, four years he's been doing that?
Someone can keep it going.
Mayor, did you jump? You were going to jump, weren't you?
You did plunge?
I did not plunge, maybe next year.
Next year, okay, well, everybody remember that. All right, we have a resolution to second, any other comments? Nicole, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes, motion carries. Last donation, Fire Department donations.
I'll offer a resolution to accept donations from the following to the New Ulm Fire Department, $240 from Ted and Jody Marty, $300 from Ted and Jody Marty, and $200 from Christianson Farms and Feed Lots Incorporated. Second.
We have a motion to second to accept those donations, any comments? Hearing none, Nicole, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes, motion carries. Last item here is a claim and estimates.
I'll make a motion to accept the list of claims paid in the amount of $3,409,403.56.
And do we have a second? Got a motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have an addendum, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to address the addendum.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we can move to the agenda, give me just a second.
Trying to bring it up here, okay. Am I go ahead and make the motion, or wait for you to?
No, I'm ready. So our addendum item is a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce.
I'll motion to approve the issuance of 11 temporary on-sale liquor licenses for the New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce, First North Minnesota Street in Ulm for an event on Tuesday, December 7th, 2023, subject to compliance with all city and state requirements.
Second.
Motion to second, any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that'll end our City Council meeting, we're going to be moving into a work session and after a short break, thank you.